Alright, we should be live now. Uh, give me a second. Been a little while since I streamed on YouTube, like a few weeks, so I'm just making sure everything's working before we start. Alright, uh, let me just do this real quick. Alright, seems like everything seems to be working. Alright, let's, uh, let's move the game, shall we? Yeah, I'm pretty sure, I streamed Rune Factory 3 years ago at this point. Also, I'm gonna get the opening cutscene in case of content ID. Uh, my profile picture, that was, um, already commissioned like years ago. Oh whoops, well, that's fine. I accidentally skipped the opening cutscene, but I think that should be okay, just cuz I'm afraid of content ID. No, I think I streamed Rune Factory 3 like a couple of years ago, even before lockdown. Like, I think it was like... Oh, I think it was when I was trying to get affiliate status, when they just released that, so I just really went in on Rune Factory. I went to play through the, uh, second and third game, cuz I had done the first game on my YouTube channel, and then I did the fourth game on my YouTube channel, then I streamed five later on when it came out. Oh, right, I've saved data, so I get bonus outfits, perfect. Also, happy birthday. Also, why do I have swim- wait, why do I have swimsuit mode on? Also, one minute. But yeah, it has been a while since I played Rune Factory 3. Let's, uh... Check. Alright, but yeah, it has been a little while. I know for a fact, I'm pretty sure this won't work until I actually get married, right? I'm actually curious, yeah, this won't work until I actually get married to someone. This is like the newlywed mode they add to the game. That's not gonna happen for a while. I'm not even sure who I wanna marry in this playthrough, to be honest. I think the only one I know I'm not gonna marry is Raven, cuz I did that my last playthrough. So I want, uh, marry someone new this time. Uh, before I do anything, let me just check, is there anything I need to change here? No, there are not very many options, okay. So, let's get started. Pia is one of the options that I was thinking of. I don't know, I'll figure it out as I play through. It is nice this is not on the DS anymore, so it's a lot easier to record. Uh, no, you can't really customize your character in this game. But I do wanna check out newlywed mode once I get to that point. Rune Factory 3 overall is actually one of the shorter games in the series from what I remember. Also, I think they did redo some of the art a bit. Everyone does look a bit different from what I remember. Although, yeah, that might just be the higher resolution art assets. The original game was on the original DS, so things were a little bit low res. I'm sorry, I'm kinda distracted by that random low-resolution bird on the left. But yeah, I love Raven, but we're not marrying her this playthrough, cuz I've married Raven like... I married Raven in my original playthrough of this game on my channel. So, like I said, I wanna marry someone different. I am leaning towards Pia, but we'll see. And it's a Rune Factory game, so, oh, it always begins with amnesia. Is there any, I guess all four of the main, or five of the mainline games have amnesia as the plot point. Frontier and Tides of Destiny didn't, but those are spinoffs, and that's why, obviously. Also, I'm just gonna go with the default name. His name is Mika. Now, Frontier, I'm pretty sure you didn't have amnesia, you just kinda followed Mist to a different village and just ended up passing out. I think you still remembered everything from the first game. Also, oh, I actually get to choose my birthday. This is one thing I do remember from the original game. I think in the original, you actually didn't get to choose your birthday, cuz it based it off your birthday on the DS. Anyways, I'm gonna go with the usual. Uh, we are summer 3. What? Uh, I just decided to stream, I might give YouTube a bit more, and I did put a poll up on Twitter and YouTube overwhelmingly won, so I decided to give it a try again. Plus, I kinda wanna transition more onto YouTube than Twitch, which has made some questionable decisions lately. Honestly, if they completely remade Rune Factory 1, that would actually be awesome. Rune Factory 1 is a fun game, but oh my god, has, is it clunky. Also, yeah, our house is a tree this time. Also, one second, this bird is just bothering me. Why is it, it feels so out of place? Compared to everything else, it's not a model, it's like a flat image. Anyways, yeah, our house is a tree this time. Oh my god, okay, if they ever remade Rune Factory Frontier and improved the Rooney system, I would love that. I really like Frontier, it's just the Rooney's are really clunky to work with. The system, I think, works. They just need to actually implement it, so you don't have to do it manually to do everything. Uh, I might, I might just scream, I'm not so sure if I'm gonna stream the entire game. I might, this game is actually pretty short from what I remember, like, 3, I think, is still the shortest in the series. But yeah, I think I might just stream the entire playthrough, cuz it's already on YouTube, so that kinda works out. Also, one minute. Gotta turn down my mic a bit. Though it will be all archived on there pretty much automatically. But yeah, we actually get a house in this game. That is still one of the things I don't like about 4 and 5, how basically, you don't really so much get a house, and you're just kinda living in someone's, uh, in someone else's building. Also, yeah, like I said, our house is now a tree. In terms of marriage, I'm still trying to finalize that. The only one I know I'm not marrying is Raven, cuz like I said before, I married her in my last playthrough, so I wanna marry someone different. Ocean's, Ocean's is like the European name for Tides of Destiny. It's okay. It's just kind of a weird game compared to the rest of this series. I feel like Shara looks different from what I remember. Like I said, I'm pretty sure it's just the redone higher-resolution art. It's not as com- like, small and compressed as it was before. Anyways, I don't think I really need, okay, fine. I don't think I need a rundown of how this game works, I know more than you. Yeah, we got our storage box, our refrigerator. Yep, storage box. Mm-hmm. Yep. You're gonna, what, introduce me to the refrigerator next? I guess we don't start off with the kitchen in this game. Mm-hmm. Uh, technically, this is correct for our character. Cuz right now, Mika, like every other protagonist, starts off not being able to do anything well. But yeah, I'll need to get some furniture for the house, obviously. We don't start off with the kitchen. And let me see, calendar is next, yeah, calendar is next. You don't have to show me everything, you know. Yep. Is it my bed? It might, oh, it might be the journal. Yep, if I wanna save, I can save here. There we go. Anyways, let's go and look at the farm. Also, I don't remember Mika having the weird, like, straps on his waist like that. I think they're supposed to be overalls, but they're just not hooked onto his shoulders. Or like suspenders, and they're not hooked onto his shoulders. I don't, I think he might have had those in the original, you just couldn't tell. Uh, Harvest Moon Grand Bazaar, that is one of the games on my list. I don't have a ton of experience on Grand Bazaar, to be honest. I own it, cuz I own all of them, but, and I played a little bit of it, but I don't remember too much about Grand Bazaar. Also, yeah, this farm is a huge mess. Yep, hoe and water pot. Oh, monster time. There we go. combat's still pretty simple. I remember I really liked 3 after playing 1 and 2, just cuz of how like, this game is a lot more smooth in terms of play, or in terms of like, uh, how you, how it plays compared to 1 and 2. 1 and 2 are extremely clunky after going back to them. 3 is about when the game started transitioning into a more smooth and, not free form, I don't know how to phrase it. Basically, it feels a lot better to play than 1 and 2. Uh, favorite Harvest Moon game? That's Friends of Mineral Town. Also, did they rename this? I don't remember what the name of the spell on our tools was before. Also, hey, more monsters. Oh, weapon time. Um, hmm, what weapon do I wanna play? Or what weapon do I want as my beginning one? Let's go with, uh, go with a longsword. Whoops, whoops. Yeah, you know, let's go with a longsword for now. We'll get them all eventually, obviously. Uh, Rune Factory 3 is more expensive cuz it came out two days, like, four days ago. Rune Factory 3 Special literally came out this week. Whoops. There we go. Ooh, free glue. I do wanna make sure I collect everything so I can craft with it later. Bye, Raven. But yeah, this is the remastered special edition that came on Switch and PC. I'm not sure what weapon I wanna specialize in. Honestly, I might just not go any weapon at all, and just use a wooly form later. Did they? They were level 1 orcs. Eh, eh, they weren't really that tough. Oh, hi there. Yeah, still not that tough, there's only three of them. I really don't remember being attacked this much at the beginning of the game, though. I know they added a new difficulty setting to this game as well. Uh, they added hell mode. Which I think I'm gonna try out once I get to that point. I don't, I think we can choose our difficulty after the tutorial section. Yeah, I think we can change it at the trophy room, right? I think I am gonna try out hell mode, though, cuz that's the new difficulty setting they add to this version. And to be honest, the original game is pretty easy overall. But I am curious on how much harder hell mode is. Uh, eh, I, I know what I'm doing. No, 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 I, I know what I'm doing. Yep, money, seeds, gimme gimme. Oh, yeah, rune points. It's stamina. If we run out of stamina and start doing anything, you'll hurt a lot. Yeah, this is one of the things I kinda had to learn transitioning from 2 to 3. In this game, your RP can go over 100 and will grow as you level and get skills. The thing is, running out of RP in this game is a whole lot more dangerous than in 1 and 2. Cuz in 1 and 2, basically, if you used anything after you ran out of RP, it would take the same amount out of your health. In this game, though, if you try to do that, it's gonna take a huge chunk of your health. So, running out of RP is harder, but doing it is a lot more unforgiving. Oh crap, I forgot, I need to actually name my field. Uh... Why my name in the farm, guys? How about... I think the tutorial was also in the original, so they just kept it. Hmm. We could name it, Farm Farm is the, is like a classic name, but how about something like... What would be thematic for this game? The original name was what, Sharon's? How about... You know what, let's just get really literal about this. Oh, that actually fits. This is underneath a gigantic tree, which is our house, so you know what? That is accurate. Whoops. Yeah, you know, let's go with big tree farm for now. What do you mean to choose anthem? Wait, did I actually choose something offensive? I don't think so. It's big tree, that's why it is. I'm just being literal about it. Also, I really need to remember the layout of the town, it's been a while. Alright, let's, oop, whoops. Let's start cleaning up the field a little bit. First thing I wanna do is I wanna collect, oh, no, don't eat that. I'm just gonna grab everything that I can actually use from the field first, which means all the medicinal herbs and all of the grass and stuff. Whoops. Oh yeah, how many seeds did she actually give me? She gave me... She only gave me 3, really? Alright. I'm gonna need to go grab some more seeds later. For now, though, whoops. For now, though, let's, like I said, clean up the fields, get some stuff planted, and then I wanna go to town and go see everyone. Also, where is the hotkey to choose tools in this game? It's gonna take a little while to get used to new controls. Cuz I'm pretty sure it uses all the hotkeys from like, uh, War Special. So I just need to kinda get used to them again. It's been a while. Also, I don't remember if this game has a fertilizer, uh, thing. I think it does. Something gotta make sure I wanna keep, oop, I wanna keep all of the things I pick up for now. Okay. Let's get to work. I don't have an axe yet, but, oop, nope. But I can at least plant what I have. Yeah, I remember that I can hold the button down. The only problem is, everything is scattered all over the place, so like... Yeah, I can halt, still hold the button down, I remember that. But the thing is, everything's so scattered all over the place, it's a little bit annoying. Alright, uh, I keep wanting to use the D-pad to pick my items, cuz that's what's been in, like, a lot of more recent games. Oh, also, I am going to equip this immediately. I can't use this yet. But I will be able to eventually. There we go. And slowly but surely, I am building up my skills. Nope, nope. Alright. Yeah, I actually skipped the Rune Factory 4, or 3 special opening. I need to look at that later. Uh, favorite story of seasons game? Well, also Friends of Mineral Town, because it's now under both series, cuz it's the same series, and it's labeled the same way now, too. Oh, nope. How do I quickly select again? Nope, that's not it. I forget, is there an ease, a quick way to move it back and forth? Oh wait, I'm using the wrong storage box, whoops, right. Is there no hotkeys to do this? Do I have to do it manually? I think I have to do it manually. Not R, oh no, it's R, nevermind. I was trying to use the, uh, triggers, it's the shoulder button. Okay. Alright, let's go to town for a little while. Let's go see everyone. Also, do you have a map in this game? I guess we have it here now. It used to be on the bottom screen. Or top, it was on the bottom screen, I think. But yeah, it's now just a little mini-map in the corner. Let's go meet everyone and get all of our tools. Favorite Rune Factory game is 4. Yes, that's the name of the farm. I did move in there. Anyways, I, I know how shipping works, I just throw it in the box and you pay me at the end of the day. Uh, I mean, I already know how shipping works, so I don't really, yeah, basically, literally just throw it in there and we get paid at the end of the day. Up, after 5 in this case. It is gonna get, I do need to get used to that, though. Cuz in 4 onward, I'm pretty sure they pick it up in the mornings. Fortunately, I don't have anything to ship yet. I mean, I do need to buy some more seeds. Let's see, what do we have for sale? How much money do I have? 500 gold? Uh, let's get some... Nope, nope. Spring seeds. Alright, so, oh, cabbages would be good to grow. Though what more turn-ups? Let's get like... Uh, I only have 500 gold to work with here, though. Uh, yeah, I streamed Innocent Life. Honestly, I wasn't a huge fan of Innocent Life compared to the, uh, compared to like Rune Factory. It feels like it needed a bit more work compared to like Rune Factory. 500 gold to work with isn't very much, but hmm... Also, there's the fact that I don't have a ton of RP at the moment to do a ton of work with, so... I'm gonna get like... 3 cabbages. And like, 3... I can't afford that, nevermind. Alright. 4 seeds is okay for now. Alright, who is over here? Oh, it's you! Oh god, Sophia. Sophia's whole thing is, um, it's really hard to parse sometimes what she's trying to say. Also, she definitely looks different from the original. It would be funny to marry her, though. Hey, Shara. Whatcha up to? Oh, hey! Yeah, Sophia definitely looks different. So, what were we talking about again? Also, I feel like the voice acting's a little bit quiet compared to the music. I might need to go into the sound settings, see if I can change that. Oh wait, I forgot about these. These are a weird gimmick. They're basically ways to get around the, uh, map, like going over water and stuff. It's really weird and they never really drive back after this game. See, I'm pretty sure these... Were these in the original? If they were, I never used them, but I'm pretty sure they were in the original. Uh, you didn't, but that's the request board, right? Yeah, it's the request board. We're gonna wanna do this just to get some tool unlocks. Yep. We'll check every day, get them done. Uh, what's the request right now? Yep, just go meet her. Well, that's easy. Whoops. Cause I know you can pick up up to 3 requests. One from the board, one from your mailbox, and one from an owl later on. Oh, Daria. I completely forgot about Daria. Alright, let's go talk to everyone in town. Like Monica! Hopefully she won't bite me. It would've been funny if that actually did HP damage. Also, wasn't your grandpa just here? I guess he went out. You are just a generic NPC, right? Yeah, no one cares, this is a generic NPC. He doesn't have a face. Also, yeah, I don't remember... Our magic seeds new? I'm pretty sure they were in the original, right? Yeah, they were definitely in the original. I see, I remember now. But it's basically just like a, uh, combat NPC. I never really used them, cause like I said, this game is actually pretty easy. Also, hey Raven. Did you always wear gloves like that? It looks like you're all bundled up for winter. Also, that voice does not sound right. Yeah, that voice for Raven doesn't sound like from what I remember. Cause I remember the original... I'm pretty sure the original had some voice clips in it. Or that started 4, I don't remember. It's been years, like I said, since I played 3. Oh, a gigantic plant sword. I'm just gonna put that away for now. Yep, I'll probably be buying some weapons later on. And then after that, I'll be making my own, cause everything you can make on your own in these games is always better than what you can buy from the shops. Okay, so where to next? Who have we not met yet? I haven't met you. Also, I never realized you had a basket of flowers on your back. I mean, it makes sense. There's Pia. I do like Pia. She's currently in the front runner for the, uh, bachelorette of... that I'm gonna marry in this playthrough. She likes bathing. That is are extremely helpful, though. They basically could give you a, uh, full health and stamina restoration. So you can do that without having to go to bed. Yeah, I like Raven. And yeah, I'm pretty sure she... She definitely sounded more mature before. It... I don't know, her new voice just sounds weird to me. They are pretty cute. I can't remember if she likes to eat them or not. I know she hates squid. Anyways, before I go introduce myself, I'm gonna do something real quick. Uh, this is the options area, right? Yep. This is the random achievement room in our house. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's the... Is that the optional, like, randomized dungeons of the game? Also, that's the DLC they added. I think cause I got the special, like the collector's edition, that's just completely included in this version. The Golden Memories Edition, so yeah. I automatically have the swimsuit DLC. I might try that for a little bit. But yeah, I know Pia hates cooked fish and she hates squid. Also, can I set this to hell mode? Yep, I can set it to hell mode. Let's go. Welcome to hell. You know what? I'll turn this on later. Oh, I should also say, it's been a little while. But yeah, I'll turn on swimsuit mode later just to take a look and see what it's like. I don't know if it applies to every single character in the game, but hey, Pia, it's been like an hour. Honestly, a bath wouldn't be a bad idea. No, no, I... I live here, I don't need to stay at the inn. I feel like this was also named something different in the original. Wasn't always the Miyako inn? But yeah, honestly, a bath wouldn't be... Well, I don't think I can afford a bath right now is the problem. And I think Sakyia is like the random vendor of the game, where like, every day they just sell a random assortment of items. Cause every game has that after 3, like from 3 onward. You can get some pretty rare stuff from that, but the only problem is I don't have any money. Also, let me talk to you all so I can do this request. Actually, can I take a look at your shop real quick? See, I'm pretty sure you're the random merchant of the game, right? Wait, is there one in this game? I know 4 onward had one. I could've sworn 3 had one too, but I might be wrong. Anyways, hi Pia. They are pretty... I said cute before. Tasty? Yeah, we're gonna need to make sure we give you nothing but raw fish. Also, I think they should be available as shops now. Okay, yeah, I think you're the random shop, you just don't have anything right now. Also, I'm curious. How much is a bath? Uh, yeah, how... Oh, actually, what do you have for sale? Ooh, skills. Um, yeah, I'm not buying any of these yet, cause I don't have money. How much is a bath? 300 gold, okay, I can't afford that, but good to know. Alright, who's next? Who have we not met yet? We haven't been in here. This is the diner. Also... Has Sherman always been that short? It looks like he's just standing on the stool right now. Also, Collette is a bachelorette, I'm pretty sure. Probably not gonna be marrying her, to be honest. Unfortunately, yeah, same-sex marriage isn't a thing in this game. This is a remaster of the original, which came out, what? Oh my god, when did the original come out? Like 20 years? Not 20, not quite, but... Yeah, they, uh, same-sex marriage had been implemented into the series yet. Anyways, time to say hi to everyone. Also, Sherman is Sophia's father, I'm pretty sure. Pretty sure they're dad... father and daughter. They have the same, uh, speaking tic. Or speech tic. Also, yeah, isn't justice as perspective thing? Cause Sherman looks like he's standing right on top of that stool. Yeah, we're not marrying Collette. I don't remember Rusk existing, to be honest. There was that one character in every game I forget exists, and I think Rusk is the one in this one. Alright. Is that everyone in here? That's everyone in here. Let's move on to the next area. This is town square. Yep. Uh, this is the manor. Is there anyone here we haven't met other than Sh...? No, I think we met both Sherman and Sophia at this point. I haven't met Evelyn yet, though. I forgot Evelyn was related to them. Probably cause she speaks like a normal person. Even if she does dress like a... I don't know how to describe her outfit. She dresses like a JoJo character. Also, it's like... Also, it's like the middle of the afternoon at this point, you two. Anyways, I think you're- Anyways, I think you're the only one here I haven't talked to yet. Yeah, we noticed. There are... It's a very unique way of speaking. Alright, that's everyone in here. Where have we not been to yet? We haven't been here yet. What's this? This is the... Witch's Cauldron, which I think is just the potion shop. Cuz yeah, Marion is this town's equivalent of the doctor. Which makes me extremely worried about the health of this town. How is this town still alive? I guess Marjorie is technically the official doctor of the town. Marion, I think, just kinda helps out, but still. I am kinda worried about the health of this town. I forget who actually read, like, treats you if you get knocked out. I think it changes between the two of them. Kinda like how in 4 it can, uh, alternate between two characters. I forget if it's as absurdly expensive to get treated in this game as it is in 4 later on. Nah, I'm good. Mike has already had some head trauma. I think he's fine for now. Also, we already told her her name. Okay, yeah, she is the main clinician. I couldn't remember which of the two did it. I mean, Mike is pretty durable overall. Uh, last house is this one, right? Oh, hey! Did you okay? You need a moment? But yeah, uh, probably never gonna really become here, to be honest, but it is here as an option. Ah! He might be a little bit less muscular than the original. I think he still looks pretty similar, though. But yeah, he might look a bit thinner in this version. I don't know. If I do, would you give me a free fishing rod? Yup, yup, we're already here, but no, no free fishing rod here. Alright, I think that's everyone except for... Who we not seen yet? Oh, right, we need to go to the forest. Also, why am I... That was weird. Uh, wrong area. I need to go west. Ah, right. Daria. She's the local mildly insane artist. Anyways, I think she's the last person we need to say hi to today. Yeah, we might come by and stop by every once in a while. We do have to pass through here to get to the first dungeon. But I think that should be everyone. Also, yeah, I think in this playthrough, we might try to do an all woolly run. Screw weapons and everything. Although it might be a bit tougher now. Oh god, it might be a bit tougher cuz I'm playing on hell mode. Anyways, we're not going to the dungeon today. I have no RP. One of these days, though, I'll go. But I think that should be everyone now, right? Is there someone I missed? What? Oh, right. This is a thing. Anyways, I'm pretty sure I have tol... Wait, did I tell... I talked to everyone, right? Is there anyone I missed? There shouldn't be. Hold on, I'm gonna take another round around town cuz, yeah, I could've sworn I talked to everyone at this point. Oh, wait, you know who I didn't talk to? Yeah, I didn't talk to Hazel. She left the shop before I could talk to her. Okay. Yeah, it does recover RP very slowly, but honestly, it's not worth it. But you can just maybe make some food and eat that to restore RP. But anyways, I think that should be everyone, right? Yeah, that's everyone. But yeah, this is also the game that introduces all the random skills in the game. Like I said, Mike has started off the game not being able to do anything properly. But yeah, over time, as we just do stuff, our skills will go up. I don't really ever like grind skills except for like the crafting ones, obviously. Everything else just kinda goes up on its own. Oh, wait, is that the new request? What's my current request? I wasn't paying attention for a second there. I think we need to go ship something now. Uh, I think I'm gonna be marrying Pia this playthrough. Also, why did... I went the long way around for some weird reason. I guess I just got in from the beginning, or from the bottom. Alright, let's just ship. I don't know. There we go. Ooh, it is already kinda getting late in the day, though. Uh, something I forged from my fields. I don't have anything else to ship yet. But yeah, this is the other type of request we can do. Nope, nope, I got it. I know how to check my mail. What do we got here? Uh, ooh, seeds. Ooh. I don't have a ton of stamina at the moment. We should be okay, though. Did I get a request yet? Yup, here we go. Let's get all of this done today. Oh, where'd he go? Uh... Wait, where did Wells go? He was just here. Right? Oop, r... Wrong button. I think he's probably at the flower shop. Yup, there he is. Yeah, I can just eat a bit of grass to get some RP back. I'll do that in a minute. Yup, I met everyone. Weirdly mean, but okay. Marjorie at this point. I think she's at the shop still, right? Yup, there she is. No, he made me not bring them. Listen, grass is good for you in this game, for the most part. I think there's one or two that are actually slightly poisonous, but... For the most part, eating it is fine for a bit of stamina. We're gonna eventually turn it all into like potions and stuff, though. Ooh, free sickle. Oh, right, this is also the first game where that was an option. We'll need to consider doing that at some point to level up like all my, uh, crop seeds. Alright, let's go home. I'm gonna eat a little bit of... Hold on, this is good for me, right? Yeah, it gives you a little bit of RP back. Is this all just three? I could've sworn there was one or two that wasn't good to eat. Ow, ow! Right, RP. Hold on a second. I'm also gonna eat myself maybe a bamboo shoot. Uh... Yeah, I'm gonna eat this real quick. I wanna get everything I can planted today. How many more do I have? One? I have one more seed left. Ow, ow, ow! Okay, I'm going to bed. Does hell mode also change the amount of RP things used? I think it just affects combat. That's a one second. Oh, the Golden Memories collection? I... I enjoyed it. The book is actually really nice that it came with. Anyways, I need to go to bed cuz I have literally a sliver of HP left. Like, what is my HP right now? It is at 2. I have 2 HP before I get knocked out. Yeah, I'm going to bed. With my shoes on, of course. Alright, um, I'm gonna put this away for now. Does this go in the refrigerator? I guess it does. It's a seed, so it goes in the refrigerator. I'll go put that away for now. Just wanna keep my inventory somewhat sorted. Alright, back to work. Also, you know what the... Oh, right, it just dried out. Also, I'm gonna do one other thing real quick. I'm gonna give this a try. Now, everyone's in their swimsuits. We'll do this for like a day or two. It was the DLC that came with the special, or with the, uh, collector's edition. I'm just gonna farm my swimsuit, that's fine. But yeah, I should put every villager in their swimsuits. Alright, everything's been watered and taken care of, and we're good. Let's go for a bit. Let's go see what requests we can do. I'm probably gonna be doing a lot of requests for today. I don't know if I'm good... I wanna try to get to the dungeon soon, though. But I at least wanna get some skills, get my stats up a bit more. Cuz yeah, I am doing hell mode. Yup, everyone's in their swimsuits. Sure, a swimsuit's cute. Alright, what do we got here? Sherman has something. Let's go see Sherman. Oh, let me also check my mailbox. I should've done that on the way out. Uh, no mailbox requests today. But yes, everyone's in their swimsuits. I think it's only... Actually, is it only the bachelorettes? No, we know Evelyn's also in her swimsuit. I think just some characters don't have a swimsuit model. Yeah, I'm pretty sure Sheena doesn't have a swimsuit model or look. Let's see, where's Pia? Up there she is. I'm kinda surprised she's not in her mermaid form. Anyways, let's go see Sherman. He has a request for me. Yeah, I always forget she's not a bachelorette. Hey, Sophia. Oh, right, that's the first arc of the game is the Tanuki. Sherman does not have a swimsuit model apparently. Good to know. Oh, good for you, I can't cook yet. Nine pieces of lumber? Uh, sure, can you give me a free axe? Yep, free axe. Why is it all rusty though? Why can't anyone in here maintain their tools properly? Yeah, that's right, we can throw things at people instead of just handing it to them. Alright, let's go. Yeah, some characters just don't have a swimsuit model unfortunately. But yeah, let's go chop some wood. Seriously, why does this axe look so much rustier than all the others? Oops. I do need to be careful though. Beginning of the game, okay, yeah, we're done. If I had some money, it might not be a bad idea to start thinking about getting a bath soon. Also, I'm just gonna take that, gonna take this off for a bit. Ooh, I wanna plant that. What we got here? Antidote herbs, I'll keep those for now. Yeah, I'm just gonna be grazing on some grass for a bit, like a goat or a sheep. You know, thinking about it, I'm pretty sure everyone probably could've seen the wooly thing coming. Alright, that should be enough RP to not make me immediately pass out. Is that, lovely, I got my eating skill by the way? Oh, wait, no, I think the eating skill requires actually cooked dishes. I can't just graze on grass and develop my eating ability. Oh, there you are. Can I have some seafood gratin? Yeah, I'm pretty sure Micah is the only protagonist that is not an earthmate. He is just a normal farmer, which is weird for the series apparently. That's a lot of money. Hold on, I have money to burn, okay. Uh, let's burn it. First things first, I need equipment. Give me... Actually, before I buy these, give me, uh, do you have any farming tools I don't have yet? Ooh. I'm pretty sure we will get a free hammer and fishing rod on our own, so I'm not gonna bother with those. Also, I wanna see something real quick. Yeah, I'm not buying any of this stuff cuz I'm pretty sure we get it all for free. Let's grab some equipment then instead. Defense and attack. I'm just gonna buy all of these for now. And then I'm gonna go spend the rest on seeds. I'm kinda surprised Gaius does not have a swimsuit model actually. I could've sworn he had one. Alright, I actually have equipment now, perfect. Oh, wrong way. Let's go buy a couple of flower seeds and a couple of like crop seeds. Also, Wells sounds a lot older in this version. What do we got here? Moon drops, sure, let's get like four moon drops. Ooh, toy herbs actually. Uh, moon drops are more profitable. Yeah, let's get like four moon drops. I'll get like another four, hmm. Another two toy herbs. Ooh, I want some charm blues. They're cheap, I'll get two. And then I'm gonna go spend the rest of my money on actual crop seeds to sell. Hi, Karina. I like her swimsuit. Actually, looking at her swimsuit is weirdly plaid. Oh, everything's on sale. I can only afford two. Kinda wish I'd come here first. Alright, and yeah, I don't think I have any mailbox requests today, right? No. Alright, rest of the day gotta be spent on farming. Let me, uh, quickly top up my stamina a little bit. I'm pretty sure, oh no, in this game, swords do drain RP. Okay. Let's get to work. I'm just gonna eat anything I pick up on my field just to get the RP. But it's not herbs I'll keep to make actual like potions out of. This game has strafe mode, right? I could've sworn this game has strafe mode. Might be in later games I'm thinking of. Alright, how much can I fit here? Honestly, I might've overdone on the amount of seeds I bought. Then again, it's not terrible, I only have four left. So if I just do this... It should be fine. Actually, let me grab a quick bit of grass. You know, maybe a kitchen, ow, ow, maybe a kitchen wouldn't be a terrible idea to get soon. Where do I get a kitchen again in this game? The Blaze, I think, right? Loz? However you pronounce his name? I'm pretty sure he's the one who gives you all the cooking equipment. Yeah, Blaze. Uh, I'm gonna go see how much that costs. I probably just want a simple thing just so I can have a good source of food. Also, I can't wait until we unlock the fishing rod so I can start getting Pia some fish. Oh, right, you also sell recipe bread. So how much is cookware? Oh, wait, do I just get it for free? Oh, okay, I just get it for free. Perfect. I forgot we got that one for free. Oh, you know what? That's the case, I'm gonna go see, uh... Though Carmen and her brother just give me a free fishing rod? Wrong way. We're not going there yet. Yeah, I am not ready for the first dungeon. I have no health and no RP. We'll go there some other day. Yeah, it's probably fine, it's a level 1 dungeon. What's the worst that could happen? Also, oh my god, I just realized how weird the like areas around town are. How did you people build a village here? You're surrounded on all sides by basically death. Also, escape, AKA the game that you can use to basically glitch out Rune Factory 1 to speedrun it. Cuz remember that was the trick to make yourself invincible to get through the final dungeon of that game? But yeah, we are not going in there yet. I'll go in there maybe on a rainy day when I don't have to water my crops. For now though, is there anything else I need to do at the moment? Is there anything else I can do at the moment without knocking myself out? Also, Carmen looks weird without her hat. Can I have a free fishing rod? If you give me a free fishing rod, I'll come by more often. But no, yeah, I'm pretty sure at the request later on. Pretty sure most of the main tools are. Actually, I'm pretty sure all the main tools are. Yeah, I can't do this today, but this is where I get my hammer. Uh, I'll have to do that tomorrow then, alright. That's pretty much all I can do for the day then. Is it time for bed? I think it's time for bed. Let's also just save real quick. Oh, also, these are ready, perfect. Actually, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna take two of them for now. The third one, I am gonna use my sickle on. Cuz they should give me seeds of a higher level, right? Are they both still, oh no, they're both level 2 now, perfect. Also, did I plant something in the wrong season? I planted something in the wrong season, whoops. I think it was a flower, wasn't it? I forgot, in this game, flowers are seasonal. This isn't like Rune Factory 4, I think, where you can just plant anything at any time. If I can get some rice, I can make some onigiri. Yeah, if you get, if you get a seed, I'm pretty sure it's always a higher level, but cutting it guarantees that you'll get one of a higher level. Or at least it guarantees they'll convert into seeds of a higher level. So I just wanted two of them. Just to have more. At some point, I need to get myself a magnifying glass too. So I can actually identify, what the? Oh, whoops, I examined it, it's putting stuff into it. These are going in there cuz I need the money. I don't think we can plant rice, I think we need to buy it. Alright, but tomorrow I should have a little bit of income coming in. I would love a bath, Pia, but I can't afford it. I am currently too poor to have a like a good bath. Alright, uh, request time, request time. Let's go see Gaius. Yep, free hammer, thank you. I'll take that. Yeah, I don't think this game has free baths. Unfortunate. Here, before I go to town, or before I go then. Actually, how much is rice? Can I afford to get some rice to make a rice ball? Ooh, no, I can't afford that, sorry. I really want a magnifying glass just to keep an eye on my crops, but yeah, I'm gonna need money before I can do any of that. Probably should've bought that instead of equipment, to be honest. Actually, no, that's not true. Equipment is really important. Early on, crop levels and stuff doesn't really matter as much. Let's just go quickly get myself some iron. How much do I need again? I think I just want one piece. Not this way. Uh, this is Rune Factory 3 special, the version that just came out. Also, what's over here? Oh, right, the giant flower field. Alright, let's do a little bit of combat. Oh hey, a wooly. I can't recruit monsters yet, but I will eventually. Right now, I'm just doing this to get some experience and some levels under my belt. Okay, iron, any iron in the area? Wait, one second, need a quick snack? Oh, here's some iron. Right, hell mode, uh, give me a second. No, 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 I'm okay. Out, right, levels in this game don't give you full HP. I did not bring any healing herbs with me cuz I left them all at home. Hold on a second. I require help. Oh, that probably respawned the monsters too. Yeah, hell mode hurts, turns out. It's fine, this is giving me plenty of skills and levels, so I'll be a lot stronger in the morning. Also, yeah, I forgot that portals in this game respawn when you leave the screen. It's fine, I'm stronger now. Oh, here we go. Longsword dash attack. Also, can I not cut this? Or I might need my sickle to cut it. Hold on, I do have apples I can eat. Ow. See, I'm pretty sure we can cut those rune flowers. Also, why did I turn around in the middle of that attack? Okay. Can I not cut this? There we go. The hitbox is just kinda iffy. I'm playing the Switch version. Well, I got one piece of iron, that's all I Well, I got 1 piece of iron, that's all I really needed. So I guess that counts. Anyways, I'm gonna get some RP back real quick. Yeah, 5 was definitely really laggy on the Switch. It's fine on PC, for the most part. Here, before I head back, I'm gonna look around a little bit. Spiders. I don't wanna get poisoned. At least with these skill mods, I should have a lot better stats starting tomorrow. Ow, ow! Hey, Marjorie. Okay, at least we're getting free revives right now. That's fine. You know what? No, that was a uh, that was, I did that on purpose. It was a death warp to get back really quickly. By doing that, I got to warp back for free. Yeah, that's it. Also, I should probably turn swimsuit mode off soon. I ki- kinda forgot I had that on still. Well. He's gone now. I mean, we might wanna move him away from the furnace, though. Yeah, Raven's new voice is just kinda iffy to me. Well, anyways, I got myself my hammer now. So what's left? Fishing rod? I think tomorrow's gonna be the fishing rod mission, right? Yeah, tomorrow's for fishing rod. Once I get that, I'll be able to start catching fish for like, uh, Pia. Although I am pretty sure the price for getting revived in this game is gonna go up as we level up. We're still in the beginning of the game, so the game is being somewhat merciful. No mailbox request right now. Okay, well, I have plenty of stamina at the moment. So what I could do... Like, what level am I right now? Uh, 4. I'm gonna go do a little bit of level grinding real quick. I keep going to the wrong dungeon. Oh, actually, I wanna go down here, because I think I dropped a few things. Oh, wait, what? Are these, these aren't mine, right? No, these are just someone dropped them. They're both level 1 still, I think. Why is there just random gear here? Well, now I feel dumb because I spent money on, ow! Actually, you know what? Maybe I'll come back tomorrow. Right, hell mode. You know what? I'll go back tomorrow when I'm actually at full health. Oh hey, you're awake. Oh, I actually got paid too becau- oh right, it's already past 5. She picked up the shipping. Alright, well, in that case... Are you guys still open? Yes. Hey, uh, more seeds, please. I swear one of these days I will stop spending all my money on seeds. Today is not that day, though. I bought 4, so... Let's put them down. That's 5 squares, that's fine. Alright, uh, time for bed. I kinda prefer overnight pickup, to be honest. Morning pickup is just kinda weird. Evening pickup is the traditional method, but yeah, I do definitely prefer overnight, just because you're not constrained about when you uh, need to throw things in the shipping box. Also, speaking of throwing things in the shipping box... I did randomly pick up some extra gear yesterday, so I'm gonna go ship that. I'm also gonna ship these apples, and... I'm pretty sure it doesn't matter if they're dry or not, but I'm gonna water that just in case. Also, just to make sure I get some good seeds. Also, the Rooney's are weirdly high resolution. You know what? I'm gonna cut 2 of these to make sure I get a lot of like, good level 2 seeds. Alright, 3 level 2s, 2 level 2, or 1 level 2. Alright, that works. Although I will say one good thing about morning shipping. If you sell things immediately once you wake up, then you will get the money right away that you can spend. Uh, let's see, sell these. Actually, you know what? Let me split off 1 or 2. Cause I'm pretty sure we can cook those, right? Yeah, morning shipping does, is interesting, but I still prefer like overnight shipping. Alright, everything's watered. Yep, we're good. Alright, but I should have some money again starting tomorrow. I wanna try something, though. So, do I have the ability to cook this? Cause I'm pretty sure if you just throw in a turnip with your hands... Is that a recipe in this game? Yes, pickle turnip, perfect. Let's uh, make a little bit more. Let's have some extra food on hand. Oh, did I miss a turnip? I thought I watered them all. Let me go see. No, it looks like they've all been watered. Yeah, they've all been watered. Also, one other thing I'm gonna do real quick. Oh, hey, Pshara, what's up? Oh, is tomorrow Festival Day already? The bottom, oh, let me go see again. I could have sworn I watered them all. Bean toss. Oh god, I remember this one being annoying in 5 because of how lag- it was in 5, I think. Where it was annoying because of how lackey it was. 4 was fun, though. This was in 5, I think. Alright, that's tomorrow, so we'll be sure to do that. I think the day after this, I will go do the dungeon, though. Yeah, they will do the festival, then I'm gonna go do the dungeon the day after. Also, let's uh, have everyone put their clothes back on. Oh yeah, I guess that one was missed. Alright, got it. Yep, you already told me about the bean toss contest. Let's go get our fishing rod. Cause now that I can, once I can start getting fish, I can start befriending Pia really easily. She loves fish. Except for squid, she hates squid. Now, where is Carmen right now? She is... not on the map. Wait, where is she? Uh, nope. Nope. I thought she ha- I thought she hated squid as a gift. Didn't she? Or am I imagining that? Okay, no, seriously, where the heck did Carmen go? Not here. Not here. She hiding in a dungeon? Or is she at the inn maybe? I haven't checked these 2. Oh, there she is, found her. I know there was one person who hates squid. I could have sworn it was Pia. I know she doesn't like cooked fish. Yep, yep, I, I, I know how fishing works. Oh, that's her gimmick, right? She hates squid, which means she likes getting it so that she can destroy them. Yep, yep, I, I know how to fish game. Yeah, she doesn't like cooked fish, I know that much. Alright, let's uh, oh, we reduce my map size. Let's just catch some fish real quick. Okay, let's not catch fish here, apparently. Okay, there we go. Got myself a miso trout. Oh, a cherry salmon. Also, yeah, I'm pretty sure the inn owners are probably not happy with me fishing up out of their koi pond. Oh, speaking of squid... There is a way we can figure out if this is a thing or not. Oh, is it raining? Why did it get so dark suddenly? Oh, that's garbage. I'm gonna fish up 1 more. Why did it just randomly get dark there? Oh, I think it was transitioning to cloudy weather. Why is there so much garbage in here? Clean up your koi pond! Alright, that's enough fish, though. Uh, where's Pia? Hey, Pia! How do you feel about this? Alright, she's okay with squid, apparently. Whatcha up to? Alright, let's go find Carmen so I can give away this fish. And the rest I can just sell for a bit of cash. Oh, I missed. I still love these games where you can just toss things at people. Sophia, wait, was it Sophia who likes garbage? I know one character does, just because they think it's funny. Yep, I already know about my mailbox. We already got ca- uh, got taught that. And we got sardine for it. Yeah, because I think she just thinks they're funny, right? I mean, we can just do that right now. Where is she? Wait, where is Sophia? It might be at the beach? No, I thought I saw her icon, but nope. Oh, there she is. Yep. I'm pretty sure she just thinks they're funny, which is why she likes them. Alright, let's uh, sell a few more things. I can just sell all these fish. The rest I'm gonna keep. I'll keep the garbage to give to Sophia every once in a while. Anyways, tomorrow is a contest. I don't have an, like, do you need a knife set in this game turned into sashimi, or can you do it by hand? I could have sworn you needed the knife. Well, whatever, they're in there now. Once it's in there, we can't get it out. I can just go catch more fish. In fact, I might as well just go catch more fish. No harm in fishing. Although... That's a rare can. Oh hey, it's raining. Yeah, this was before you could actually take things in and out of the uh, box. I am selling this, though, for the money. Cause I'm pretty sure that's the, is that the only use for the rare can? I know Sophia loves them, but eh. Yeah, I'm pretty sure they're only there for selling. Money is money. Alright, is there anything else I wanna do today? You know what? I'm going to bed. Tomorrow we can go to the contest, and then the day after that, I might go clear the first dungeon. That's a lot of money. In later games, they do, and this one, I'm pretty sure they do nothing. Oh, I, yeah, you do need to wa- okay, that's good to know. You need to water them before you pick them up. If they're like, dry like that. Alright, we good? Oh, right, I was gonna do 1 more thing. Uh... Maybe they just goes through the branches? Maybe they just goes through the branches? Cause I'm pretty sure, this needs a knife set. Yeah, we can't cook it with it right now. Alright. Well, that's a failure dish we can give away. Let's help out Wells. Oh, he's right here. Flower blossom, kill nine of them. Got it. I'll probably kill them as I'm going through the dungeon, so that's fine. Well, we have a little bit of time to kill. Cause it doesn't start till like, I think 10? Oh my god, this thing is horrifying looking. Yeah, we have a little bit of time to kill before the contest starts. You know what, if we have a little bit of time to kill, what I'm gonna go do is I'm gonna go kill some monsters. Get myself a couple of levels. Cause I am just a sliver away from level 5. Actually, where are the plant monsters? They're over here, aren't they? Erdent Trail, no. These are, ow, god! Oh, we have buffamooze here too. Oh, I poisoned myself. Hold on, I need to back up. Yeah, the way forward is the other way. I'm gonna go home real quick. I require antidote. I'm also gonna bring a bunch of medicinal herbs with me too, just so I can have something to heal with. Anyways, it should be about time. Uh, let me plant this real quick. Okay. Should be about time for the contest to start. Yeah, I'll teach him a lesson later. Floating Isle, yeah, we'll go through there later. Wait. Can I not start the contest, or is it too early still? Does it start at 11? It might start at 11. Either that, or we can't do it because we started a quest, which would be dumb. Oh my god, can I seriously not do the contest because of this? God, alright, you know what, hold on. I think I have enough time. That is really weird design, but okay. Uh, hold on. This should be pretty simple, nine of them. I could also just cancel it. It wasn't the floating, you know what, screw it. We'll do it tomorrow. Yeah, that is a really weird design choice, but okay. Let's uh, let's do this. And we have, yeah, we have to avoid failed dishes. Let's go. Alright, hit me with whatever you got. I missed. I am very bad at this apparently. I just need to avoid any failed dishes. Is this what she's been doing with all the failed dishes I've been giving her? The one? Nope. I'm doing a good job on accidentally avoiding all the beans, which is the exact opposite of what I'm trying to do. I feel like I keep accidentally avoiding the beans on ac- uh, but whatever, I got 100 or 250. Did I win? Nope. Oh my god! How much did I have? Not nearly enough apparently. Oh my, oh wait, no, no. Okay, I was actually close, I was like 400 away. Well, close enough. Please move, you're standing on my bread. Hot milk. With sashimi. Bamboo rice, alright. Once I get some rice, I can start making some more dishes. For now though. I have plenty of energy left. I'm gonna go take another stop at the area. I wanna see if I can at least get a little bit further in. Cause to get to the boss, don't we need to mess with the statues? Whoops. Let's also not blow up the uh, save point. Yeah, I'll have money, I can buy a bit of rice tomorrow to cook with. Also, thank god you guys don't hit nearly as hard anymore. I am now, ow, I am now stronger than I was before. Slightly. But yeah, tomorrow I must see if I can make some rice balls and some mushroom rice then. Also. Where's my food? Oh, did I put it away? I might put it away. You know what I might also consider buying? I might also consider buying myself a one-handed weapon so I can equip a shield. So yeah, is the gimmick on this one? They need to face each other? Oh no, they have to face across the way, I think. Yeah, you know what? I think tomorrow I'm gonna switch weapons. I'm gonna buy something one-handed so that I can equip a shield. Yeah! Rub it in, why don't ya? Yeah, it has to be facing across, is the gimmick. Did I put away my food? Oh, I can also bring this with me. Yeah, I put away my food. I'll also bring myself a magic sword to help me with combat. We're on hell mode, so it's probably worth using that. For now though, it is time for bed. I, hold on a minute. I keep forgetting I need to actually water them in this one. Eh, you know what, it's fine. Actually, no. I just saved. Cause yeah, sometimes your crops will dry out, you gotta water them before you pick them up. A little bit of water will fix that dryness. Okay. Having slightly moist crops is important. I'm gonna pick one. Cut the other. So those should be level 3 now, perfect. You know what? Nope, not that. Alright. There's nothing I need to sell, right? I'll sell this. Alright, now that it's not a festival day anymore. You know what, no, I'm gonna help out Hazel. She didn't arbitrar and they cut me off from a festival because I didn't do her request. Relax tea leaves to mount, okay. I'll take those. Also, while I'm here. Are your crops higher level now? Level 1, level 1. I think we have to sell higher level crops for them to be unlocked. Alright, that's fine. Uh, give me like... 9. And then, while I'm here, let me get 2 things of rice. Oh. I'll buy this later. Alright, where are those relaxed tea leaves? Sure, people say that, I think. Alright, let's go turn this in. First things first though, no one's at the store, because you guys aren't open yet, are you? 9 AM. Alright, I'll be back in a, in a few hours. Cabbage seeds, I'll take those. I made her mad, it's fine. She actually kicked me out the store. Wait, can I actually not go back? No, I can go back in. Alright, who needs something? Pia. We'll go help out Pia in a second. Oh, if I'm gonna go see her, let me make sure I bring her an offering. This'll do. Alright, Pia, oh, she's in the bath. Uh... I can't talk to her right now. Alright, I'll come back later then. We're waiting. Oh wait, it's already past 9, nevermind. Let me buy some equipment. I wish to buy a one-handed sword. Actually, wait. Do long swords to you? Hold on a minute, I wanna look this up real quick. I forget if long swords and shields still work. I think it has to be a short sword. Alright, well in that case, give me this. Give me this. I think the extra defense right now is way more important. Is there anything else I can buy? A bargain. Ooh. Actually, no, no, these are all kind of, hmm. More magic defense wouldn't be bad. It does take away quite a bit of attack though. You know what, nah. I think the extra shield defense will help out quite a bit. Plus, it's not like I'm gonna really be using weapons after this uh, dungeon. Is Pia out of the bath yet? Yep, there she is. So... Fun fact, I haven't taken a bath in this game yet. Uh, I like it really hot. Oh, whoops. Um, I like it when it's nice and rainbow colored. I like it when it's nice and crunchy. I think I answered poorly. Well, whatever. Request completed. Oh, while I'm here. Oh, fish. Alright, grape juice. Alright, let's go home, get that stuff planted in the inn. Yeah, I'm going to the dungeon for a little while. Oh, I also want to do a little bit of cooking before I go. And you know what? A bath wouldn't be a terrible idea either, just to make sure I'm at full health. Make sure we're nice and clean for the dungeon. Can't go in there all dirty and like tired. Whoops. Alright, that's done. What do I think I want to do? Not that. Let's do a little bit of cooking, I just bought some rice. So if I just put rice in there... I can make an oigiri, and then I can also make some bamboo rice, so just bamboo and rice. Perfect. Extra food for me. Alright, I'm gonna go take a bath and then I'm gonna go do the dungeon. I am here to buy something. What do you have for sale? Okay, just weapon skills. Alright, let's take a bath. A hot spring sounds really nice. I've never been to like an actual Japanese hot spring. Although maybe not right now, it's super hot right now, it's the middle, or like the end of summer. Alright, let's go. I'm all rested up, I have equipment, I have like, food. Where are the stats on this food anyways? I have my magic sword to help out a bit. RP, intelligence, vitality. Probably shouldn't eat the pickle turnip. The bamboo rice would be good to eat if I'm low on health. Let's go, I'm being the dungeon today. Level 5 even on hell motion. Oh god, I keep doing that. Wouldn't be too bad. But yeah, I need to make sure the statues are facing across the water. Also working on getting my short sword skill up a bit more. Ooh, still hurts, but that's okay. I just need to be a little careful. Oh, there's another portal over here. Oh, you know what else I forgot to do? Ow! That's fine. Fine, just still getting used to the uh... The damage curve of hell mode. I think I got hit by multiple attacks there at the same time. Oh, that's an angelot herb, whoops. At least the sword uh plant should help out quite a bit. I keep forgetting I actually have this thing. Oh, there we go. Oh, that still hurts. Also, my sword died. I'm just gonna eat this. Oh! Ow! I'm back, Marjorie. Don't mind me. Yeah, the standard game is pretty easy. Hell mode hurts like, well, hell. Also, I think I dropped my sword seed over here. Let me go pick that up. Alright, just need these to face across the way. Oh wait, no, uh, it's good now. It's the magic realm. You know what? Maybe the extra magic defense was a good idea. Over the attack power. How much more until I level, by the way? Eh, it's not too far away. I thought I had more. Oh, did I put away all my medicinal herbs again? I think I accidentally, I keep accidentally putting them all away. That's fine. Oh, there's the level I was looking for. Don't wake up, don't mind me. Wait, are they not? I could have sworn they just needed to face each other, right? Did I do something wrong on the other side? Oh, is it because I knocked myself out, they reset? Hold on. Yeah, I think it's because I got knocked out, they reset on the other side. Hold on, let me uh, let me go fix that. At least I can take out these first enemies pretty easily now. No, they're still facing the right way. Wait. Did I do something wrong? These are both facing the correct way, right? Yeah, you know what? Hold on a minute. Oh, you're closed. I was gonna buy myself a bracelet. I'll buy myself a bracelet tomorrow. I did this right, right? They're both facing north. Oh wait, did I mess, I might have messed up one of the ones down here. Did I? No, they're both facing up. Or do they need to face each other? I could have sworn they needed to face the other side of the, like... Oh! What? Oh, I thought, okay, no, I think the face was facing onto the left or the right. It's hard to tell with this one. Because the sides in the back are almost the same. Oh, I need to go to the other side. Alright, well, that makes more sense then. Here, before I go beat the dungeon, because I think I can take on the boss. Uh, let me go actually grab my healing items I made. Or all my healing herbs. Also, I'm gonna sell this. I keep going the wrong way. I'm gonna take advantage of the fact that early game I don't need to pay for treatment if I get knocked out. It's nighttime, that's fine. Let's at least go try to go see what the bosses might... It's the Tanuki's the first one. Oh, actually, you know what I could do? I can just use these to get myself more RP again. Ow! Okay, you guys don't hurt nearly as much anymore. I'll make sure I eat something before I go fight the boss. Oh, right. Okay, we're not being the boss today, because I remember now. We have to ask uh Daria to fix the bridge for us. How much more until I level? Okay, I'll come back tomorrow. I am determined to beat this dungeon before I end the stream today. Oh, are we doing this right now? Oh, right, we do this right now. She's fine. Actually, we could, oh my god, I forgot how gaudy the bridge was. She does have impressive carpentry skills, though. You know what? I'm already here. And you stop trying to beat up the save points. Let's do this. Alright, boss time. Ow, god, you hurt. You know, I probably should have brought potions instead of just relying on herbs. Yeah, I'm gonna do this tomorrow. Because I'm pretty sure we can get potions made here. It's also late, let's just go to bed. I'll go back tomorrow. I'll make myself a little bit of extra food when I go back too. I'll buy more rice in the morning. I'll make more bamboo rice. Oh right, it was raining earlier, everything's watered already. Oh! Oh, right, I had these too. I can wear uh outfits from the other games. You know, looking at, I forgot how dumbless outfit is. Aerie's outfit looks pretty good, though. I'll wear this for a little while, why not? Alright, first things first. Gonna cut 2 of these for the seeds alone. Gonna cut this to upgraded one more time. Same with this. I just want the higher level seeds, level 3, level 2, level 2, perfect. And then the rest I shall sell. Actually, do we need to sell the seeds to get them available at the shop? Or was it just the crops in this game? You know what? I'm gonna find out. I faced the wrong way there, whoops. Got all the seeds I had, yes. Okay, everything's been watered. Yeah, I'm gonna go buy myself more rice in a little bit. I can make myself more bamboo rice, because yeah, just looking at these stat upgrades, that'd actually be really helpful. More HP, more vitality and strength. Also, I'm curious, skills, what will increase my defense a bit more? Oh, that's one other thing I want to do. I want to get myself that ring to get myself more defense. Love. Vitality will help out, farming is, actually farming's almost level 15, oh my god. Logging. Mining, fishing. Fucking walk-in. Alright. Let's do a little bit of, oh, you know what I could do? Start breaking some rocks too. I don't think this cast has mining, right? Or does it? Oh no, I think it does cast mining, okay. I wish to buy... Like 2 things of rice. I'm gonna save the rest of my money so I can buy myself a magnifying glass soon. Uh... Oh no, these are on level 2 now, perfect. I guess we did need to sell the seeds, we just need to sell the crops. Alright, I'll buy 4. And then... As I found out last time I was in the dungeon, uh, we need magic defense. I guess in hell mode, defense is better than offense, so let's grab... Actually, no, before I grab that. A bargain's? No. What kind of sword do I have right now? It's just a broadsword, right? Yeah, okay. Uh, let me buy... Yeah, I'm gonna lose a lot of attack, but right now that magic defense is looking really good. Turns out a lot of the enemies in that area can two-shot me if they use magic. Okay. Also, before I go, uh, request? Ooh. Let's gooo. Buffaloo's, chip squeaks. Who do I want to help out? You know what? Let's have our blaze. See what he needs. Just received a delivery of eastern dishware. Oh, she's right next door, so this should be pretty easy. It's gonna rain soon, it just got dark. Uh, bring him east. He got a delivery of eastern dishware. Alright, made your delivery. And I got recipe bread. Oh, I accidentally skipped through that. It was a mixer recipe, though. Alright, let me go do a little bit of farm work. Because I just got myself some more seeds. And then after this... I'm gonna do a little bit of cooking, go take a bath, and then I'm going back to the dungeon. I'm pretty sure I can beat the boss soon. I just need to be careful. Let's make some bamboo rice. Oh, fucking skill, right? Failure is still an option. Eh, it's fine, we still got one of it, uh, one out of it. Alright, I think that's everything I need to do for now. Uh, before I go take a bath, I'm gonna take advantage of the fact that we have a little bit of time. I'm gonna do a little bit of grinding, just to get my skills up a bit more. Short sword's at level 8, or at level 7. Oh, you know what I could do, actually? Hold on. We can kill 2 birds with 1 stone. Oh, nevermind, the request is gone. What's up with Daria? She helped us out. I'm guessing she just needs lumber. I keep going to the wrong area. That's not where the dungeon is, dungeon's down here. Yep, you need lumber. 3. Oh, I forgot you could cut down signs in this game for lumber. That still works, right? Yep, that still works, okay. Let's not do that, though. That is vandalism. Anyways, we can just cut these down instead. I'll go get myself a little bit of extra lumber. Ooh, okay, yeah, it's bath time. Also, hey, everyone. Also, yeah, don't carve my house. What'd I get for that? I keep trying to eat that. Uh... I keep trying to eat that, uh... Oh, iron, that works. I think Raven wants some iron, so that, I could deliver that to her tomorrow. For now though, I severely need a bath. Seriously, couldn't you guys give me some free baths like they do in 4? It'd be good advertisement. Everyone can see how good your baths are. Alright, well anyways, we're fully healed up, I have food on me. Let's go see if we can fight the boss now. I'm feeling good about this, I'm a little bit more tanky than I was before. Also, I will be taking those. Oh, you know what I could do too? Hold on, is this gonna work? Do I only have one, yeah, I only have one failed dish, is this gonna work? Also, I do not wanna accidentally eat that. First things first, let's try to get into phase 2. I missed. I don't know if that actually worked or not. Okay, you know what? We are definitely taking a whole lot less damage. That extra magic defense was apparently really important. Either that, or that dish actually did lower his stats by quite a bit. Okay, no, we are taking way less damage now. I'm gonna eat this real quick. Fairly safe and sorry. Also, what else I can do? Summon a little bit of help. Oh, pissy boss mode, let's go. Alright, backing up, healing. Well, there goes my seed. It's fine, we got this. Didn't realize just how much a difference a few skill levels could make, early game, on hell mode. Ooh, I do need to back up and heal a bit though. Uh... Which one's the real one? Please die for me already. Which one's real? They also have a lot more HP on hell mode. Also, I think that pickle turnip lowered my attack a bit as well. There we go, finally. Also, I'm gonna be taking that leaf, because I think that's a crafting material I can use later. Cause yeah, I know this definitely adds a special thing to your weapons. I'll be keeping that for uh, later. I think in this game later on we can tame them once we have the proper items. Actually, can you in this game? Pretty sure they can't, you can. But yep, with that we can unlock the ability of finally transform. And I think I did this last time, but I'm gonna do an all woolly run of this playthrough, so... After this point, no more weapons, we're going full woolly. Cause yeah, basically what uh, woolly form is, it's hand-to-hand wrestling. It's basically grappling mode, we can pick enemies up and throw them all over the place. But yeah, we can't transform around other people. But yep, woolly mode, I think this also has its own skill set, right? Oh, I haven't used it yet, so it wouldn't show up. But yep, who needs weapons? All we need to do is knock enemies down. And then we just slam them all over the place, ow! Things still hurt though, I'm going home. But yep, that's dungeon 1 down, like, 4 more to go? Uh, you can't lose the belt, it's like return, it stays on you no matter what. It's a spell basically. I did a request today, right? Yep. Alright, well... Like I said, this is gonna be a mainly woolly run from now on, cause can we still use tools whilst a woolly? I don't think we can. Yeah, we have to actually be in human form to actually use tools and stuff. But woolly form is gonna be mainly for combat. Anyways, I beat the dungeon, there's not much else I really need to do right now, so, might be time for bed. See festivals coming up? Earth's birthday's on the 11th. Alright. But yep, dungeon 1 down, and I think with that this would be a good place to wrap up the stream. Yeah, we'll take care of the rest of the farm work and everything else later. Got through a good portion of the early game. Also, what is my relationship with Pia at the moment? Alright, 2, Sophia, I also managed to get to 2 hearts, cause I keep giving her all the stuff I keep catching. Who is still 0? Colette and Marion. That makes sense considering I barely talk to either of those 2. Everyone else in town likes me though, except for Carlos, who I also have not really talked to that much. Alright, but yeah, like I said. Thanks everyone for coming out today. Uh, I'll probably continue this maybe next week. I don't know, I might consider starting to stream during the week at some point too. It's been a little while since I've done that, but... Uh, just keep an eye on announcements and I'll probably announce it ahead of time if I do end up streaming during the week. We'll see. If I do, I'll probably be like around Wednesday or Thursday, eh, probably around Wednesday. Also, right, no one in, I just realized her I turns into a G. Everyone in town doesn't know we're a monster. That's fine. They're not too freaked out about woolly running through town. Woolies are harmless. But yeah, thanks everyone for coming out today. Uh, see you guys next week.